All right. Welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the city council meeting for the city of Montgomery. It is exactly six o'clock on the dot. I would like to ask TJ Wilkinson to have our invitation, please.
Well, we come tonight with humble hearts and bow here. We come praying for this, not only our city, but this country and this world. But we pray that you give us understanding, patience, and guidance with each other. Give us an open mind, Lord, to understand and be patient with one with another. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. The United States flag first? I pledge allegiance.
United States of America and to the republic.
One nation.
One nation. In the vision, with justice, law.
Now the Texas flag.
Honor. Texas flag.
Flag.
allegiance to the. One.
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 One. And indivis.
The first item of business on the agenda this evening is. convene into public hearing for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to appear and be heard regarding the following. One, convene into public hearing by the city council acting as voting board of adjustment regarding a request for five foot side yard setbacks in lieu of the required 10 foot side yard setback for the hills of town creek. For an eight acre parcel located at the intersection of Emma's Way and scenic hills court as submitted by Chris Cheetum. It is exactly 6:02.
Okay, this is an item, as you described, it's referenced by section 98 122 of the zoning ordinance. It requires a side yard of not less than 10 feet in R1 single family residential developers requesting a five foot variance to allow for a five foot side yard. At the May 26 meeting council approved variances for smaller lot sizes than required by the by the ordinance for the 30 foot addition to the hills of town creek subdivision. Five foot side yards are typical for smaller lots like what has been built in hills of town creek sections two and three. And what is being proposed here for section four? Legal notice was posted on the city's website and published in the Courier. 19 letters were sent to surrounding property owners with copies of the legal notice, the zoning map, and the preliminary plat of the property. And so your recommendation for this item is to receive public comments for consideration. This is an agenda item for action number nine tonight.
Did you receive any comments via email or any other form, Richard?
No, we did not receive any that I'm aware of unless something came in at the last minute that Dave knows of that I don't.
Do not.
With that. Is there anyone on the phone that would like to speak up in this public hearing? Okay, with that, it is 6:03 and we will adjourn this public hearing. Number two on your agenda. Receive final report for the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a rezoning request for the hills of town creek section four to rezone from B commercial to R1 single family.
Okay, you know, the planning and zoning committee held two public hearings to receive comments. You know, it attached to their final report of findings and their recommendation. And so your action for this is to receive that from the planning and zoning commission. And we must have that action before we actually hold the hearing on this.
Okay, I move that we receive the final report of findings and recommendations from the planning and zoning commission resulting from their two public hearings regarding the rezoning request for the hills of town creek section four and eight acre parcel of land located at the intersection of Emma's Way and scenic hills court.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the motion. I'm sorry, I'm pulling it up on my, my computer here. I glitched, so I apologize. We accept the motion as described by Councilwoman Huss. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion.
I have a second by Councilmember Lacy. Is that correct? Thank you.
Yes.
Council, you ready for the question?
Good.
All those in favor of accepting the motion as presented by Councilwoman Huss and seconded by Councilman Kevin Lacy, say aye.
Aye.
All the opposed, all those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the motion as presented by Councilwoman Huss and seconded by Councilman Kevin Lacy. Next item on your agenda is item number three. Convene into public hearing regarding a rezoning request from B commercial to R1 single family for an eight acre parcel of land located at the intersection of Emma's Way and scenic hills court. Currently zoned B commercial to be rezoned R1 single family and submitted by Chris Cheetum. It is exactly 6:06 PM and we will. Public hearing.
Okay, this is a request for a 30. 30 lot addition hills of town creek subdivision near Montgomery High School. The property is currently zoned B commercial is proposed to be rezoned R1 single family residential. 19 property owners within the 200 feet of the affected property notified by. Legal notice was published May 19th, May 26th. The action item for the actual zoning action will be on June 23rd to allow for a proper posting timeline. Tonight's activity, receive public comments for consideration. We received no comments to date by mail or email.
No comments.
If there's no one here who did not receive any comments, then we will go ahead and adjourn 6:07 PM. The next item of business is visitors and citizens forum. Secretary Henderson, did we receive any emails or phone calls to be added at this time, at this juncture?
Mayor, I did not receive any.
Okay, and we will move on. All right, item number four is the next item of business on your agenda. Matters related to the approval of minutes for May 26, 2020, public hearings and regular meeting.
I did not have any comments other than a spelling change that I discussed with Susan. I thought the minutes were very well done.
As well.
So if nobody else has any comments, I'll move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the meeting agenda, I'm sorry, the, the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented.
But just to be clear, the only item on the consent agenda was the minutes.
Correct.
Thank you.
I need to find my bookmarks. Okay. Consideration of possible action. Next item of business is number five. Consideration of possible action regarding the annual financial audit for the year ending September 30th, 2019 as prepared by Belt Harris and Testic LLP.
Yeah, the audit was presented by Darla Deere, Regional Director of Belt Harris Bahatchek. And Darla, I believe we do have the screen share on if you wanted to use that. I would like, following the audit, I discussed several recommendations going forward with Darla. They included making more frequent bank deposits of funds, a process feed already identified and implemented previously after the last fiscal year ended. And to make changes to the way public improvement district number one reimbursement and the subject properties are tracked, so they'll be separate from the general fund. We do, we do plan to incorporate the changes recommended. So with that, Darla, I'll let you have the presentation.
And good evening, and I'll start off by saying thanks to Susan and Richard and the other city employees that helped get all the information, providing us the information to bring all the audit together. Without that, it would be a very difficult job. They make it so easy when we come there. They're very great to work with. So I am going to basically go over about the first three important pages of the audit. And I'll give you the, if you're following along on the screen. But I'll also give you the page number and the PDF number if you've got something in front of you. So the opinion letter is the first thing that we'll go over. It's on PDF page seven. And it is also the report page number one. You've received an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that you can receive that there are no material misstatements and all disclosures have been made in your report. So great job in receiving the unmodified opinion. And that is the page that we consider the most important out of the audit. But now we're going to flip you on over to, this is going to be on PDF page 28. And page 22 of the actual printed report. We'll go over the general fund revenues and total expenditures for the city. Total revenues. Then we have total expenditures of $3,692,277. With the transfers in and out, that gave you other, a use of total other financing uses of $12,120, leaving you an ending fund balance of $1,250,837. So great job on your fund balance. There was a little, little use of the fund balance this year, but still a nice healthy fund balance that the city has. Now, we are going to flip over and, and then we'll, we'll come back to that if anybody has any questions on those numbers. We're going to flip over to page 65. And this is going to be report page number 59 on the printed, printed report. This is the general fund budget to actual. So the section that we're really going to focus in on is going to be the expenditure. And that's where we compare your actual expenditures to the budgeted expenditures. You'll see that you have three areas that are starred to the right. And those amounts are the expenditures that exceeded appropriations at the legal level of control. But basically what that means is the budget that was passed by the board, the expenditure in those areas were over budget. And so as far as what we would consider best policy would be that that those are reviewed monthly and that the budget amendments, you can wait till the end of the year to do budget amendments. But that is, there, there's no repercussions to the city for that. That is just a control and compliance regulation issue. We, but again, and then probably in the cities, it just depends on what city management and, and how that you would like to handle that part of it as far as going forward. We, we would suggest that those are reviewed monthly and that budget amendments are made just following best, best policies for the city. But as, as, as cities go, you probably have about 50% of them that realize there's really not any teeth behind this compliance requirement. And so you've got probably about 50% of them that do not pass budget amendments, whatever the city has approved, that's the one that they go with. So it's really kind of up to council, city manager, how, how you would like to go forward as far as those, those budget part. But again, whether, whether it's, as long as you've, you've gone over budget, it will continue to be a management, a management letter because it is a compliance requirement.
So Darla, if you could be specific, because we obviously look at our financials, or maybe not obviously, but we do twice, I mean, sorry, at, at the second city council meeting every month. So it's something that is available and usually discussed. And then we do a budget amendment at the end of the year. So how is that different than what you're recommending?
That should, that should be it. I don't know exactly. There may have been some entries that were posted after that was done at year end that, that made those expenditures go over budget in those areas.
Okay, so that makes it difficult then if we as council do one thing and management does one thing, and then if the accounting side does something else, then we can't ever be again compliant if we don't know what's happening on the backend. Is that fair to say?
Well, yes, when the, if there's any adjusting entries done after year end, you can still go back to council and say, hey, we had to make an adjusting entry for to accrue the payroll, whatever it is that we, that you had to do at year end and tell the council that, hey, we've, we've gone over in this area and that we need a budget amendment made for this.
Okay, so even if we're in the next fiscal year, we can always go back and amend the prior budget in order to avoid these asterisks.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay.
So those adjusted journal entries could have caused these issues?
Um, it is possible. I can pull that up pretty quick and answer that question since I'm right here in front of the computer. That is one of the advantages to having it with you instead of standing in front of you in city council meeting.
I think it was the first three pages.
Yes, so.
There were some significant journal entries, that's for sure.
Yeah.
I'm going to, I'm, I'm actually going to look at your trial balance and I'll, I'll tell you the, the way that we have those grouped. So if you'll give me just a couple of more minutes, I've got you open here.
No, I think it's an important question to ask, especially since it's the essentially largest footnote, I think, to our clean audit.
Sure. Um, let's see, the, now, and what I'm looking for is in the general fund. So in, uh, and I, I can share this if we need to. All right, in general government, in that, in that grouping, we made one journal entry of $170. So it was not, yeah, in that general government area for the 29,000, that was not one that we would have created. Okay, in the next area in the, let's see, public safety. We did make a journal entry and that was to accrue payroll of about 21,000. So you can see that you're over by 47. We did make a 21,000 adjusting journal entry to accrue payroll for the last payroll that would have got posted in October, but it would have included some days in September on it. So we accrued that payroll. So that was that 21,000. Now, we do that every year, so we back out the one that would have been made just so that we understand there's still, you're basically the same amount you're getting included in that. So that one, and then publicly, let's see, what's your next one? Capital outlay. On the capital outlay, we made a, one small entry of about 4,600 in the watch guard to increase that amount, but I believe that that was something that, that was a client adjusting entry that Kathy had me make. And that, that was in the capital outlay area. So that was, you're over by 87,000, and that was a $4,600 entry that was made into there.
Okay. So these are things we should have known about before and we could have done them ourselves prior to year end.
Yes.
Okay. Are you taking notes now?
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, I think somebody may have been asked.
Yeah, sorry. Darla, this is Kevin. So I just saw, I'm understanding this correctly. What you're saying is once we put our budget together at the end of the year, if we move past the end of the year into the following year, do we realize, oh, well, we went over, you know, $87,000? All we have to do is go back and adjust the budget and raise it to, to cover the $87,000 and that's okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
That, you're basically, you're approving a use of, and let's just say in this, in the case that you would not have had any revenues there to, that you weren't increasing your budgeted revenue, revenues. You're basically telling us that we're going to use on, in your example, the $87,000 budget amendment. You're basically saying we are approving to use $87,000 out of our fund balance.
Because we already did.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so I guess my, my question, this is probably just a new councilman question here, as, as far as accountability part of it?
It, there's no repercussions. It's, it's, it is a management, it is a compliance requirement, but it has no teeth as far as what happens to the city in, in the event that, and, and that's whenever you're going back to, you have about 50% of the cities that don't see the point in passing a budget amendment. And then you have others that don't want that management letter comment in there and they want to pass the budget amendment.
Right, and from a practical perspective, it makes sense to have political understanding of what spending is happening.
Yes.
So it behooves us to stay on the same page, obviously.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
And if you've got any other questions on there, I'll, I'll be happy to answer on any of the pages. That's just the ones that we consider probably the most important out of the audit, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I did have one, but sorry, who did I interrupt?
On the, on the pension fund, are we in better shape from the prior year?
You, you still have a, a net pension asset. There was, it, I think it actually decreased a small amount. That is up here. I'm going to guess.
It's page, it's page 53.
Um, yeah, I was going back up to see how it affected on the, on the financials. So right in here where we have our net pension asset, it's $88,006 for your governmental activities. And in, in your utility or your enterprise fund, you had about $10,000. I believe that is a slight decrease in that asset. But you're, you're still not recording a liability, so you're still in good shape in that, that amount. Because most people do not have net pension assets. They have net pension liabilities.
Darla, who determines the, because actually that was the exact question that I was going to, who determines the sensitivity to the discount rate that you provide on page 53?
The TMRS does. We take that all the information from TMRS. They provide it in a, in a package that we pull down from them. And so all we're doing is taking their data and, and.
Okay, so if we want more information or on sensitivities, we have to get it from them.
Yes, yes.
Okay, because obviously the discount rates that they're using is ludicrous. Okay.
Yes, we, we've heard that before. We don't have continued control on how they're, because all we're doing is basically taking their data on their pension.
Okay. Um, would you care to comment on the timing of the audit? Because this has been a problem for us in the past, and this is the latest one we've ever had. And obviously the COVID-19 thing is not helpful, but even without it, this would have been exceptionally late versus our preferences.
Um, I, let's see, we, we actually had you a draft in March, so it, as far as your compliance requirement at the end of March 31st to have this in for the Securities and Exchange Commission. We, that information was filed with them, so you didn't miss any compliance requirements. As far as the timing, as far as getting us the information, as soon as you can get the books closed, we'll be ready to hop in there. So if that is in November, then we'll be ready to roll in November. So it's, it's basically that we're, we're waiting on the information from the city.
Okay, so that was a problem, a problem on our side because, you know, when you look at this in June and you're almost ready to close your next fiscal year, it's, um, you know, it, it's kind of a tick in the box rather than a treasure trove of useful information.
Right, now, we, we had, I think it was about March the 15th or maybe the first, second week of March, I believe, that we had the audit ready to go. I think you just got hit with the COVID-19, and so we put off the presentation port of it. But as far as your compliance requirement, it was in. Now, as far as us working the information, we can do it a lot sooner.
Okay. Because, you know, February would be nice, because then it's still pretty fresh and useful for, you know, anything that we learned that we should be doing differently to be able to apply to the current year. There's still a possibility that we can, it's relevant.
And, and I have.
We're scrambling.
And, and I have thrown it out there for Anthony and we'll discuss with Richard and Susan that we come in and do an interim, an interim visit during the summer. It, it's included in the audit. We basically get the testing and we look at any, we'll, we'll review the budget to see if there's any areas that you're over and give you recommendations on anything that we see before you get to year end. That we would do an interim type visit and that way that whenever year end does come that the only portion that we really need is just the financial information. And so we get the audit out a little quicker than, than if we had to work in through the testing requirements and the compliance portion of the audit.
Okay.
So we're, we're ready to roll on that. We're ready to roll when, if y'all are.
Okay, fabulous.
And I'd say Darla, I'm definitely going to work with you so that we do our end of getting it done earlier.
You bet.
Thank you, Darla. It's nice to see you again.
Yes, nice to see you.
Thank you.
So we just need to approve or accept the audit, or do we approve it, or? I guess we accept it, right?
Yeah.
I move that we accept the annual audit for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2019 as presented.
Okay.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the annual financial audit year ending September 30th, 2019 as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion.
Is that Councilmember Burley that seconded?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All those in favor of accepting the annual financial audit for the year ending September 30th, 2019 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the annual financial audit for the year ending September 30th, 2019 as presented. Next item of business on your agenda, item number six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm waiting to, I'll see you in two weeks.
Discuss issues related to services provided by Waste Management of Texas, Inc. under the municipal solid waste collection and transportation agreement and direct the city administrator to take any necessary action following discussion.
Terry Woodson is present also. Let me unmute Richard.
Yep.
I muted there. Okay, I, we've received, you know, some service related issue questions that have come through related to Waste Management at the city hall from residents of the city. And I've also had some questions that came from a couple of council members. Right now, I thought the best thing to do would be bring Terry Woodson, representative of Waste Management here to meet directly with council. And hopefully we can get some, some dialogue and some answers to the questions and, you know, help improve the service and answer any questions that y'all may have. So Terry, I'll go ahead and let you speak.
Well, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to, you know, step into y'all Zoom meeting. I haven't done too many Zooms. We do Teams. It's just a different program. So when I got the email from Richard, I was concerned. I pulled reports from our system. If the city called in or a resident calls in, it doesn't matter which one, we log every call. So I went ahead and pulled January till today, or well, it pulls from the, to the 4th of June. A report of all missed pickups. A report of all missed pickups. The, the service. The, the issue we are in right now is the fact that a lot of people are staying home, of course, and have been since, what, March seventeenth, I think it was, or March sixteenth, basically, when a lot of people started staying home. The volume of trash, we are at between twenty-eight and thirty percent more volume. Again, it doesn't matter where we are, it doesn't matter if we're in your community or another community, or a big city, it doesn't matter. There, we are running that heavy every single service day since this started. And it's just because people are at home, they're eating all three meals at home. So some of our routes are running behind as far as, it's, you know, we only be by somebody's house at ten o'clock in the morning, but we're not getting there till twelve-thirty-five. And so I know that some of the calls that have come in, we just haven't been there yet. But we do have, we feel like we definitely did have thirteen missed pickups that we, for some reason, and it's hard to know why, but we missed their homes for not servicing them. Our goal is, once we're notified, is to come back the very next service, the next business day. So it could be a Saturday, because Saturdays are business days for us. If they call on a Friday or Saturday, it could push to Monday. I went through each month and looked over them, reviewed them, talked to some of our operations staff and management. We do see a pattern on a few factors. What I've asked to do is that every time the driver goes by that house, they have to call into our dispatcher, log the time and date that they are at that home. And they have to, they have to do it while they're sitting there, because we can, I guess, GPS where their location is, and it tells us where they're at when they call it in. So they actually call it from the address. So it will tell us that they were really there, okay? So I've put that in place on several addresses, which I can send an email to Richard with those addresses, if you'd like me to do that, to help, I didn't, you know, because those are the things that I could identify by looking at the log that we, or talk. I, I spoke to, you know, if a customer calls me, I'll be more than happy to talk to them. I've, myself and one of the office managers went out to a resident's home and made special arrangements for a special needs resident recently to help her meet her, you know, to, she was facing a big challenge, lost her extra money, and we just didn't feel like that was fair. So we took an extra step, normally would not service walking that long down into somebody's back of their property, but we did for her. Again, because she disabled, and that's just not something we're gonna say, oh, no, it's more than twenty feet, we're not gonna do it. So we went ahead and did that for her. And I have talked to her several times, she calls me, you know, every now and then just to check on me, but she's a very sweet lady, so that's been, been pleasant. We, with all of, everything that's happened, Waste Management has not reduced your service. We have full staff running, we're very proud of our staff. Until last week, last week, we had not had any people call in sick at all, since March. Last week, we did have a few drivers call in and took a personal days, and we covered those routes also. So we're very proud of our staff. In your community, we, once a week trash, once a week recycling, and the once a week bulk that we pick up, we service a number of services a month, and it's five thousand four hundred and forty-three services that we actually touches, that we touch your residents in your community. And that's not including your commercial handload and the front load business that we do for the school district and for other businesses in your community, that's just your residents. And so annually, we touch your residents sixty-five thousand times. And I, I think when you look at that, that's a lot of touches. We, unfortunately, we're not perfect, but we do think we have good protocols in place that when we make a mistake, we're able to recovery. I've worked very closely with Haley, she is a pure pleasure to work with. She has a great attitude, and her follow-up is amazing, and I really appreciate that. So we've got a great working relationship as far as keeping things straight and communicating with each other on a regular basis. I'll be more than happy to take any questions or any suggestions on what you would like for me to follow up on. If you have an address, I can take the same steps with an address that you may be aware of, that you feel like maybe need some extra attention. I'll be more than happy to do that.
I've got a couple of questions. What, what is our regular trash day in the city of Montgomery?
Okay, so your regular trash day, I'm gonna pull my file, just if you don't mind, because.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, thank you. Wednesday is your day, and we do everything on that start date. And the only thing that we don't do on Wednesday is the at-your-door special collection. That, because it's, it's a household hazardous waste, you wanna call it, you know, special, that is done on a route. So that's a little different service that is also provided for your residents.
So also on Wednesday, we could, could expect the recycling container to be picked up also?
Yes, yes.
I was told it was the next day.
Yes, due to the overwhelming volume, and which is, they're doing a great job, your residents are doing an amazing job. We were not able to empty the truck and get it, to empty the truck, we had to drive all the way into Houston to a regional recycling facility. We couldn't get there and get back, we just ran out of drive time. We were sitting on the freeway on forty-five at five-thirty in the afternoon, so time we got all the way back in there, it was, we were out of hours. We came back the next morning, finished the route. That hasn't happened a lot, but when that happens, I got with Haley the next morning, gave her a map, showed her where we were down, and so that she can, we also let our customer service reps know, so if a resident called us, they could be prepared to let the residents. That does unfortunately happen, but we come back the very next morning.
Okay, um, something else I was a little concerned about, that I was told that the driver placed, at least somebody that I spoke with, the container in the middle of the driveway, once it was emptied. Is that where it should be placed?
No, sir, it should be put back at the point of origin. I drove through your community a couple of weeks ago. I, I was there, I was driving through, headed into Backdoor Huntsville, so I come through y'all's community, I also grocery shop there, but. The, most everybody's carts are at the driveway on the sides, or if they, if their street is, if they're, they put it right in front of their, the grass, right, right there where we can pick it up, and that's where it should sit. They should put it right back. I definitely bring that issue up to our ops manager to make sure they understand that that's not acceptable.
So all things aside, since the city contracts with Waste Management, the way I look at this, this reflects on the city. Because this is a city service that we're providing people are paying for.
Yes, sir.
All that aside, I'm curious, now, when they have a complaint, should they call the city? Should they call Waste Management? Should they call you? It looks like it's kind of inconsistent.
Well, some cities, everybody's, everybody's different. Some cities wanted them to all call us or split. Your city, we have advertised. With our advertisement, we do have our phone numbers on here, but some residents are gonna wanna talk to the people they see and know and, and have a relationship with, and they're gonna call. We could do a mailer to your residents and say, please call Waste Management, we'd be more than happy to take them. We have seventy-five people that take calls in Texas. Right now, these folks are sitting at home, just like I'm sitting at home working, but we have, all of our technology is at their homes also, and they take the calls. And they're monitored through our systems and even observed through our systems.
Richard, what would you prefer? They call Waste Management, or they call the city, or? Because again, there's some inconsistency, and I don't think it's fair that you guys have to field service-level calls, and then call them, and then they get back to you, and then you would get back to the resident. So is there anything in place that, that, I guess, the protocol?
But right now, I mean, the residents, some of the residents says, Terry said, you know, call them directly, some call here. It's usually easier for the residents to call us, because then they only have to remember one office. And when that happens, we're aware of issues that are going on. You know, we're, we're aware when, you know, we get that call, and then we call Waste Management. Yes, there's some extra workforce there, but we're plugged into the problem. When residents are calling Waste Management directly, they're probably getting the response quicker, obviously, from Waste Management to go straight to them, but we have no idea that number of calls.
Okay.
I guess I really didn't answer your question, there's a bit to either side of it.
We can provide you, I can provide a report quarterly to the city, if Richard would like, of all the calls. Again, every call that comes in, even if it comes from the city, is logged into our system. If y'all would like us to do that, we'd be more than happy to do that, to get, so that you stay in the loop of everything, even the calls we take directly.
I think that would be good for us to, to get when you have that report.
By the end of this quarter, I'll, I'll get you one that goes all the way to.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, so when you, when you know that it's gonna be missed, usually around the holidays, everybody understands that, you said everybody's been at home, and they're kind of watching. Is there a way that there's a more proactive approach that we can take? Or is it just, is the best approach just wait for people to call and, and then let them know that the next day they would get serviced?
I mean, I don't know when we're gonna have an issue. You know, last Christmas, I don't remember too many. I mean, we haven't had anything really serious happen, except a couple of times where, due to trucks, and we just couldn't get back in time, we've carried y'all over. It's hard to know when that's gonna happen, I mean, it just really is, especially with the volumes that change right now. Normally, we're out of your community by four o'clock or three o'clock in the afternoon. And right now, we've been in the community five or six, just because of the volume is heavy. And we're actually making an extra trip to the landfill, which is close, it's here in Montgomery County.
Terry, is it? I was like, is it possible at the end of the day, when you know, or the company knows that the truck will not come back out, that we could get a call or an email at that point? Because if we know at the end of the day, we may be able to put word out in the community, either that evening or certainly first thing in the morning, you know, that, you know, trash will still be picked up the next day. Because I'm sure there are cases where someone goes, oh, my trash wasn't picked up, and they pull their can back, and then they're not aware that a truck is coming out the next day. When we had that happen last week, I think it was mid-morning when we found out, so it's too late for some people to go put their can back out.
They send me an email every evening, around eight o'clock in the evening, because our time, our trucks stop work, back to the office, it's, it's that time. And so they do send me an email, and what I can do is send, if I, on Wednesday nights, I can send you an email no matter what. When I receive that email, and I have a definite, yes, we're not gonna be back, we couldn't finish, I can send you an email and just say, we'll be back first thing, and here's, here's information. Or I can send you an email saying, everything is good. If you would like that to be done, Richard, I'd be more than happy to do that for y'all.
All right, yeah, I, I would appreciate you doing that. I, I'm not so much concerned about, you know, all the weeks, so it might be good to confirm. But if, where we know something wasn't picked up, you know, if we get that word, you know, we, we may have a short timeline, but we might be able to put that either on the community sign or on social media, at least, or at least be aware in the office for those people that call first thing in the morning, that we could have a response to them.
Okay, I will put that in place. Today's Tuesday, tomorrow's Wednesday, so tomorrow, when I find out, I will let you know Wednesday night.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a question for you.
Yes, sir.
As far as picking up somebody's addresses trash, if you have two containers, like trash containers, do you charge full price to both containers?
No, I don't believe so, let me check. Yes, they do charge, no, they charge nineteen sixteen is what I charge the city for an extra trash cart, it's only thirteen ninety-nine. For an extra recycle cart, it's six dollars and twenty cents. I don't know if y'all upcharge my charges to the residents, but that's what I would charge the city.
Y'all give people, I guess, for the second trash container or third or fourth, a discount, right?
Well, yeah. If, if they need that, the commercial handload is the same prices, your commercial businesses are the same prices as the residents.
Okay, so if a commercial has two or three containers near, near all this, one price, right?
Yeah, so the, the first one is the nineteen sixteen, and then everyone after that's the thirteen ninety-nine.
No, I'm speaking about commercial, not residential.
No, the same price, the commercial has the same exact pricing as the resident.
Oh, it does, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Why can't, so, why is there not a, something in place for commercial?
I apologize, I couldn't hear that, sir.
Commercial businesses cannot get a recycled container?
Yes, sir, they can.
They can?
No, they, yes, they should have a recycle, because your nineteen sixteen includes your recycling cart.
Okay, okay.
If somebody doesn't have one, they may have, they told us previously to take it away, because some of them didn't want it. They just wanted two trash carts, and they didn't have room, so we picked it up from them, and as far as that goes. So it, it's not mandatory that they do it. I just pick it up with trashing.
Okay.
Is that all?
Um, it's been a little while, I would like to know if council would like me to do a guideline mailer to your residents. You have quite a few new residents in the community, and it's been two years since we've mailed one.
That's, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, because I'm just sitting in my office, and I really need something to do some days, you know, and sticking labels on envelopes helps keep me busy and out of trouble. So I'll prepare it and get it to Susan for Richard's final approval, and update it with anything, you know, new dates and phone numbers and stuff like that, and just make sure everything's accurate, and get it to Richard next week, and then we can start, I'll start working on that.
Especially one with the information about the special pickup for hazardous materials. That's been, I think, a really nice thing, and we've known, we had a heavy trash weekend that was oversubscribed in a flash, and I think it's because people are home and starting to clean up, and I think there's probably a lot of that sitting around.
Yes, oh, yes, ma'am, I will definitely make sure it's included.
Great, thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, the next item of business on your agenda is item number seven. Consideration of possible action regarding approval of the agreement wide between the city of Montgomery and BGE Services to perform the limited master drainage study for the Town Creek watershed.
Okay, as I think everyone's aware, BGE was selected for the study following a review of eight firms that submitted under the qualifications request, with five firms that were ultimately interviewed. Their professional services agreement, you know, is to perform the study to identify drainage work reformed under GLO funding the city has had approved following the, it was a tax day flood. You know, there's four primary task items outlined, and looking at the task and talking to Chris Proznowski, I, I believe, and I think, you know, Chris is, let me know, believes that the items that are under task two and three identified by BGE could also be performed under the GLO funding at a later time. So Bill Cotlin with BGE is on this call if there's specific questions, or if Bill wants anything, or has anything to say related to this specifically.
I would just say, thank you guys for, for considering us, and it's really great to, to see everybody, and congratulations, Randy, for your new position.
Thank you. I, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
I'm gonna pass that, right? On your attachment A, under eleven, it says site visits. It said this paragraph does not obligate BGE to visit the site, but obviously, you're probably gonna visit the site, right? Attachment A, number eleven.
Yeah, I think that, that's kind of boilerplate language. I think it assumes that we'll do a site visit, but it, in case we don't, it says we don't have to, but we'll be doing a site visit.
Now, I was curious, because I've been here since oh nine, and the law, most law that Town Creek is under, actually private property. How do, how do y'all handle that? Do you have to get the property owner's permission to survey that and do your studies?
Well, if we need to do a, a survey across the, across the property, we would. We're gonna be doing a lot of our geometry of the creek based off LiDAR, which is, you know. Uh, we're going to be doing a lot of our geometry of the creek based off LiDAR, which is, uh, you know, uh, a process that where somebody flies over the area and, and uses a, a, a machine to get the, the geometry of the property. The places where we really need survey is where, uh, the creek crosses a, uh, a road to get the culverts and things like that. So, uh, those places are in public right away, so we won't need to, to go there. But there is a possibility that, uh, that we've, we've find something on LiDAR that doesn't make sense to us. And we need to go out and, and send the survey crew out onto private property. In that case, we would get their permission.
And, and this is Chris Rosnovsky to clarify Richard's comment. I do think that the topo survey is something that's going to need to be done. And they have it in there as an hourly task because as they go through the LiDAR and then finding out what they need to go field verify, uh, with the survey crew is what, what Bill has in there. So likely that, at least a portion of that will need to be done, uh, for their study.
Okay. Cause I know, uh, so you'll actually take the, the data you get and actually update the models. So I know there was concern about some of the models having old, old, LiDAR had two thousand and eight data in it. And also flows from nineteen ninety-nine. So you would take as much new data and update the models, right?
Right. So we'll get the most recent LiDAR we can, and we'll also look at even more, probably more recent aerial photographs. Uh, and if we see places where the LiDAR, the photographs don't match up, that's where we're going to probably go out and do some surveying.
Yeah, we got some real nice drone shots from friends in, in Waterston that they had went over, over time before, uh, the creek was modified in twenty eighteen. And then also, uh, before the ponds, some of the ponds were built, you know, in that area. But I guess the goal is to do a good survey and good, good representation for the city. And then from there, we, I guess we'll take it, Richard, and, uh, decide with the stakeholders, what we do with it. And hopefully your stakeholder wants to, uh, go with the plan.
Well, related to this, uh, study, you know, uh, this is for the, uh, GLO funded items. So the intent is to take these recommendations and the city engineer is also the project engineer on the GLO funding. So they'll have to make sure that that meshes into a plan that is, uh, works under the GLO process. There's over, uh, I believe over seven hundred thousand dollars, if I remember that amount correctly, Chris, uh, for the drainage portion of the GLO amount.
That's correct. And, and to your point, Randy, yes, getting involved with the stakeholders. And once the scope of what Bill has complete a, a town hall would be necessary, in my opinion, for the, cause this again mostly focuses on the Martin Luther King, Baja Road, McGinnis area of town. So having the town hall with them to go over what the plan is. And it's, it's likely going to require their participation for future easements, uh, et cetera, and, and access to their properties to get these improvements completed.
Yeah, this, this is probably a good time, but just guessing with, uh, proposed town creek crossing, that's gonna affect that, that, uh, waterway also. Thank you.
Hey, Bill, I just had a quick, um, question for you in regards to the cost estimates. Where it says, um, obviously the client should trust BGE's recommendations as far as the estimates go. However, the estimates that we will provide, um, may vary from the actual costs. Incurred by the client, which is the city. So obviously you're gonna put the estimate out there when you get, the work begins. The costs are tremendously different than what the estimates are. There's a fail safe in there so we can discuss it before it goes forward, correct?
Right. You know, uh, the, the cost estimates we're going to be doing are kind of being a pretty high level, uh, cost estimates with not a lot of design information or design being done. They're basically for budgeting and prioritizing. And then not in our scope, but in, in your design scope, as soon as you get, uh, into design, they'll be doing a, um, uh, uh, a more specific cost estimate for you, uh, probably in your preliminary design phase, which they'll narrow that, that down for you. But our goal is to, we might be a little high on all of our cost estimates because we want to make sure that you have enough money to get there. But we're not going to get down to the level of doing quantity takeoffs and stuff like that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And Kevin, just to give you a, a little bit of background than anyone else who, because the GLO process has been going on for a while. There is a initial scope kind of put together a few years ago now and a, a high level estimate then. Now, what this does is this is the study that, that defines what the final scope is, that it works, and that it has the backup to then submit to the GLO to get them to approve all this moving forward.
Thank you, Chris. That makes sense. Well, if there aren't any further questions in regards to the study, what is our next action here as council?
Professional services being presented.
So move to, uh, accepted professional services as they are presented, um, by BGE.
Second.
Accept the professional services presented by BGE. This motion is debatable, amendable and requires a majority vote. It is now open for discussion.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
So, sorry, so under this, we're directing the mayor and the city administrator to sign this agreement as is? Richard?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All those in favor of accepting the, uh, item as, uh, the professional services presented by BGE, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the, the, um, professional services agreement presented by BGE. Number eight is the next item of business on your agenda. Consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following ordinance. An ordinance by the city council of the city of Montgomery, Texas amending the zoning classifications as defined in the city code of ordinances, chapter ninety-eight, zoning for lot sixteen, area D, Montgomery turn side, section four, from R one, family and B commercial zoning districts is founded on the city's official zoning to be commercial zoning district classification. And to amend the official zoning map, providing a savings clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date upon passage and publication.
This request is for the vacant lot with Pond Street frontage behind Heritage Place building. It's near the Valero fueling station. The property currently lies within two different zoning districts. It's partly in B commercial on the eastern half and R one single family residential on the western half. The owner has applied to rezone the entire property to be commercial and construct an additional surface parking lot that will serve the Heritage Place development. Public hearings for P and Z and city council have been held previously with no comments received. And adoption of the ordinance would change the zoning classification, you know, as described here. And so this is an action item for tonight. And you can, I believe you can see through the spring share, you know, the property, uh, you know, the subject by the bounding yellow line, given, uh, the red line, which represents the property modification boundaries.
I move that we adopt the ordinance as read to rezone the property in question from the mix of B one commercial and R one single family to all B commercial.
Deacon.
This is a very important statement that we adopt the ordinance as read from mix of B commercial and R one single family residential to all B commercial. This motion is debatable, amendable and requires majority vote. It is now open for question. All those in fa- in favor of adopting the ordinance to rezone the property from B commercial and R one single family residential to all B commercial as read, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will adopt the ordinance to rezone the property as read from mix of B commercial and R one single family residential to be commercial. Next item of business on your agenda is number nine. Consideration of possible action by city council acting as the zoning board of adjustment regarding a variance of a five foot side yard setbacks in lieu of the required ten foot side yard setback for Hill Creek, section four, an eight acre parcel, intersection of In this Way and City Hills Court, as submitted by Chris Chitam.
Okay, the, the hearing for this item was earlier this evening. Uh, section ninety-eight, one twenty-two of the zoning ordinance requires a side yard, not less than ten feet in the R one single family residential districts. The developer is requesting five foot variance to allow for a five foot side yard on either side. And as a reminder, city council is acting as the zoning board of adjustment in this item. That requires that a super majority be in favor for the item to pass.
Did we, um, in a previous approval link, um, the approval to the creation of a pocket park? Or does that need to take place with this one? Cause I believe we discussed it, um, with how small this area is with the, the lot sizes. So I wasn't sure if we had already done that or if we need to do that here. Cause I don't actually see, I don't think, the little park that we had spoken about.
This is an older one, do you write on that? I don't have an updated one, but, uh, the engineers, the P and Z and council will all see the final.
Okay, so it is on the final?
And, and you tied it with, we did the preliminary plat and also the variance for the building lots is where we tied that one in, uh, for the pocket park. That was a condition.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I do have a question, Chris. Are you aware that the residents of this development, uh, the development around here has gone to Chitam and asked for a park? And I'm understanding that they actually were promised a park. Is this the part, park that was promised or is that an additional?
Was that, I'm sorry, were you directing that question to me? Cause I, I do not know.
Yeah, okay, I, I was, uh, I don't want to hold on here, but I thought maybe you might have some insight.
I can check. I'm not aware, um, of which ones they're talking about, but I can, Dave and I will regroup and figure that one out.
So then if we do take action and that, that, that is not the park or that is the park, we, if the residents were under the assumption that there's going to be a, a true park-like experience and that they're unaware that this is, that potentially this could be the park-like experience, are we accepting something that, um, I don't, if they're dealing with, uh, the developer directly, I don't want to impede on that. Or lock them into something that they thought they were getting something else. Does that make sense?
So, uh, I made a little clarification. So it's, you're saying existing residents in the, the existing homes believe that there's additional park coming for them?
Yes, they have fought for a park and I am told that was, uh, their, their fight was, was successful and that they were promised a park. They would be getting one. In my understanding, it's going to be in this area. So I, I didn't know if that pocket park was what, I think their idea was different than what, um, the, I understood from the previous council where we discussed this. But for clarification, I didn't want, I didn't, I wasn't sure if we could, we agreed on this. If it locks down the potential that they won't get their park that they're trying to negotiate, I guess is my question.
Mayor, if I can just, I think those may sound like separate issues, but, um, in terms of, you know, just to point out sections two and three, the developer was, uh, StyleCraft itself or their development arm. And, and so what, uh, Mr. Chitam had done was just to sell the land to, uh, StyleCraft. And then now section three is he's doing now, or, and there's no one actually, you know, I guess there's no lot owner. So, and it's being done by Mr. Chitam, the developer, so.
I, I need to go back and look at, discuss that with the, uh, some of the residents and constituents in that area. Because I think they, I think they did go to Chitam and not StyleCraft. Sorry, I made that up.
I was reading here on the notes in the quarter, uh, about the variances. It's a paragraph below the variances, next to last, it says, uh, sections two and three of, uh, variances. There's real important that section, the two, three were provided, did provide compensating open spaces. That's not true? This one's not, right?
Uh, sections two and three both had compensating open space, which were, uh, shown on the, um, approved, uh, plat, but this is right. This variance was for no compensating open space except amended by what, uh, the P and Z discussed with them and what the council affirmed.
So, so the park that Sarah may be talking about may be considering that other open space.
It, it, you know, very well could be that, you know, residents from section and two and three believe that this is a park or something that's for them. I don't know if the two issues are, um, are the same or not, but we'll find out.
Hey, uh, Chris, I had a question about the, uh, square foot for each lot. I'm looking at lot three, four, sixteen and seventeen. I went, look, I went out there this week and looked at it. And there's a big drainage ditch running and rot through there, you know, where those lots will be. And when it leaves, uh, the area on the west side, it, it's, it starts getting wider and wider. And this plat only shows a thirty foot drainage easement going across those four lots I just mentioned. And that's fifteen foot on each lot. We all do the square foot of that lot, do y'all subtract the fifteen foot that's on that lot for drainage easement? And do the calculation that way? Or y'all include the drainage easement in that calculation? Because some of those lots, you won't be able to put a house on what's left unless you want to put them in the ditch.
Correct. So that's one thing that, so the, the thirty foot drainage easement is what is existing today that serves the neighboring development. It's not a, and so, and to answer your first question, the areas that are shown include the drainage easement. So it's the what they, uh, the lot that you would own and fee, not necessarily what's encumbered by an easement or building. Um, one thing that that was discussed with L squared early before they started the design, is there something that needs to be looked at and how they're going to accommodate that so it still meets the function and you have a functional lot at the end? So one thing that was suggested, uh, which we'll have to see when they get through the, the final stages to make this a reserve, uh, instead of part of the lot and adjust it. So it's a, a common green space that has to be maintained and would be maintained to serve its drainage function. Or they might change up the drainage path, uh, and fill that swell in. We don't know yet at this point, uh, since they haven't completed the design yet.
Okay. Yeah, especially lot sixteen, as you can see, the, the bars running across that lot, the ditch, ditch does the same thing. It spreads out across that lot. I know y'all can come in and put some dirt in and try to keep the water in that little ditch. But what, what I would like not to see in the city, look at it close, would be not like something happened in Lake Creek down here when they built it and Buffalo Springs water went right through the house there.
Correct.
So I want it to probably be picked up on y'all final, right?
Correct. Yeah, that, that was definitely something that we pointed out in that preliminary plat stage. Uh, and that as they get through design, they'll have to show how that's compensated. Uh, that it doesn't affect or reduce the amount of flow that can go through there. It also doesn't negatively affect the houses surrounding.
Okay. So P and Z will get a chance to look at the final before, before we see it again.
Uh, yes, so both, they'll have to go back for their final plat approval. And that will go to both council and P and Z as well as their plan approval. Uh, since it's a new subdivision, that will be looked at, uh, by council and P and Z as well.
Just curious, who owns the detention pond and where does it flow to?
So the detention pond is owned, but it's, it's not located in this section. Uh, it's located in the platted area for the apartment, so it's owned by Chitam. Um, I don't, I don't remember the exact entity he has it under. And then that outfalls onto the MISD site, uh, and then goes through the creek. uh and then goes through the creek that runs down the middle of MISD and then ultimately back toward Town Creek.
Chris, what's the advantage of having the houses five foot closer to each other?
They're able to get, so so with the, it's kind of to Randy's point of just more usable area, they can put a larger house on a smaller lot. So, you know, the original or the the ordinance says it's ten foot setbacks on a nine thousand square foot lot. So they're trying to still get more house by reducing the setback and reducing the lot size.
Larger house, higher price point type situation or?
Correct.
Did we ever find out, I think Sarah had mentioned this in the last meeting, we talked about this in regards to a sidewalk around the entire retention pond. She's asking for sidewalk, I was asking for fountain, I think Becky wanted a couple more benches. Do we um find out more about?
We we have not heard anything additional. So uh right now they haven't submitted any additional plans and Dave might know more. But I think they were waiting to get through all of the variances to then dive into the construction plans uh and also fund his escrow agreement, et cetera, uh to continue on with the process.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
Is this item uh just for the five foot setback on the side lots, yards, the other two variances were already taken care of? Or is this for all three?
This is just for the setbacks.
Okay, now the ones are taken care of, okay.
Right, the the lot size and the compensating open space was handled at a previous council meeting.
And I think it's also important to um say that, you know, P and Z has done um a look at the entire city and this is one of the areas that they envisioned a denser um housing application for the city.
Yeah, just for the record, uh I agree uh with having those areas. Well, we're trying to make all those high density and normal areas all with the same ordinance. And uh to me in the future, it'd be great to have two ordinances, one to dictate what goes on in the high density areas and the other ordinance to take care of the other areas. We have one ordinance and we're trying to stick everything in there and every time uh somebody, a developer comes in, he wants a variance. This is the first time, I believe, we're actually three variances. You know, once you get decide to get a smaller lot, the the ordinance says you should have an open space. Now we're even where variance like to even do that. So next time.
I think it's hard to. I think it's hard if they're both classified R one residential. I think we'd have to come up with a different class altogether of residential to have two different uh zoning uh sets of ordinances or standards, but I hear what you're saying. It'd be nice to have a standard that suited one type of density versus a standard that suited another type.
Yeah, well, especially what Sarah's here and when you put, you you pack a lot of people in here and they have small, very small yards, they want to do a ball or get out and do something, there's no opportunity to go out in the street and do that versus having a little bit of open space. Anyway, if you have a high density area, they probably still should have an open space to go play in.
Mm hmm.
That's all I have.
And I just confirmed they are two different subjects. So thank you for that, Dave.
Oh, is that her?
Make sure that we did not hurt the residents in the area, so.
Well, if there's no further questions, I mean, I move to approve the developer's request of the five foot variance to allow for the five foot side yards.
Second.
It is removed and seconded that we accept the developer's request for a five foot variance to allow for a five foot side yard. This motion is debatable and amendable and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of the developer requesting a approving the developer's request for five foot variance to allow five foot side yard, say aye, say yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the developer's request for a five foot variance to allow for a five foot side yard. The last item of business on our agenda this evening is item number ten. Consideration of possible action regarding approval of a revised site plan and an additional cottage design for Moon Over Montgomery as submitted by Larry Jacobs.
All right, well, I'm going to tell Larry that we save the best for last here.
I'm glad to hear that, Richard.
Yeah, back in December night, twenty nineteen, the council approved a special use permit for the Moon Over Montgomery. A short term resident rental college cottage project owned by Larry and Beverly Jacobs. Uh, the property is on Clipper Street behind Jim's Hardware, the north side of the historic downtown area. With the special use permit, three specific cottage designs were approved along with the preliminary site plan. Uh, Mr. Jacobs is presenting another another cottage design with the Victorian era aesthetic and has his revised site plan available uh after evaluating options with his engineer. When the special use permit was originally approved, it did not allow for a revised site plan or variations of the cottage design to be approved by staff that had to come back to council. And so and so that's what's being presented to you tonight for approval. Uh, yeah. And so the recommendation is to approve the cottage design and revise site plan as presented. But also council may want to consider consider whether or not it wants to authorize staff to have some discretion in approving minor changes or if it wants uh uh any change to come back to council as in with the original uh special use permit requirement.
So so is he actually removing the first three options?
He's intending to utilize the first three options that were approved. He's adding a fourth option here tonight.
Thanks, we got four options now.
Right, so and so the first two were previously approved and and they are included in the packet here. Uh, they're the three that are colored colored uh later on in the item as well as uh with what the original preliminary site plan. Uh, the site plan that you have that has a a red in the upper left marked revised site plan is the new site plan. And the uncolored uh proposed Victorian style cottage is the one that he's proposing to add.
What are the main differences between the uh original site plan and the revised?
If I can jump in there, um it's uh the reorienting of some buildings, there's still fourteen cottages, there's still space, you know, in the same way. I think there were three up uh near the road frontage. Now there's four because he's kind of getting a little uh further along into planning. And I think he's planning on a four cottage uh phase one. And then um add the ones that are or or then add the ones to the north later. But you know, nothing in terms of an element has either been added to or taken away from the site plan.
So so this one, this revised plan has two phases versus the first one. It looks also looks like uh, I'm not real familiar with the first one. I thought I saw the detention pond looks a little bit bigger. It may just be the drawing. Detention pond looks bigger than it was on the first one and also using rocks in the parking area. Was that on the first one also?
Right, I think on the say, you know, to the point on uh the pond is, I think it's a little uh further along in uh the design of the project. Now to kind of understand, you know, what kind of um areas needed. So this is, you know, just a, you know, this is, you know, I would guess is the accurate size of what the detention pond is. We've not seen the plans or, you know, they're not that far along, but um I suspect that this is the actual size needed for the site.
Rocks, parking in the parking areas for each cabin.
So there's same number of spaces. I'm sorry.
And then and now we have a city ordinance against using rocks?
Um, in terms of the parking ordinance, you you know, depending on, you know, right now in a commercial zone, it is uh said to uh to have to be either asphalt or uh concrete, but you know, that ordinance is a part of a larger, you know, piece of the development ordinances that I would second what you and uh councilman Huss were talking about a minute ago in terms of um updating the development uh code ordinances to be able rather than a variance for a sustainable parking uh solution, you know, we ought to have that, you know, um as part of a in ordinance, you know, that would regulate things like off street parking. But I I know in the beginning he um had talked about uh the gravel and we've just not, you know, when he's um is to the point of uh the uh construction documents, that's when we would be looking at a variance for.
Also given its original design, um trees were an important part of maintaining the trees were an important part of his plan and if you asphalt everything I think he would lose that aesthetic. So, you know, obviously there's, you know, the practical purpose of uh retaining water and then there's also the the definite aesthetic of saving trees.
That was, excuse me. Uh, that was one of the things if you notice on the plan, the uh we we ended up with a little drive going around those two pecan trees because we thought we could space the cottages better uh and have a little circular deal and some uh be able to divide the traffic a little bit better coming in and out as we get back to the toward the back. So there'll be kind of a relief area there where people will circle around those pecan trees. Those are the two uh those black dots all represent pecan trees are the larger trees that we're trying to trying to uh preserve.
Is there other trees than those three that I'm seeing?
Uh, yeah, there's kind of zoomed in, Sarah, but you know, there's some back in the back also that we identified. Uh, we're doing these first, the the front section first and that was what we were kind of homing in on making that entry in that front drive. Uh, in the previous plan, all four of the houses were over on the east side of the lot and the the road kind of came in and swung around and there was uh two houses fairly close to the street where the new drive comes in. Now we've got one which would probably, we're we're thinking the Victorian will probably be the keynote
Love it.
cottage right there where people will see it from the street and uh but it it really gives us more room to spread them out and keep those two pecan trees right there in the front kind of uh is a feature of it and you know we're we're selling environment and we're selling uh come to Montgomery and and enjoy the village kind of feeling going forward. And I think we just think this is an improvement on the previous site plan. We haven't increased the density or anything. Uh, the uh, the drainage area, Randy, to your question earlier uh that is a local, that's where the geology, the geographic contours tell us where to be. Uh, depending on the amount of uh impervious color covering stuff, the engineers will get with Chris and you know, figure out, is that going to be a circular pond? Is it going to be a rectangular pond? But that'll come with our engineering plans and our final plans when they get submitted to to staff for engineering review.
This is in a dump out to the northwest, right?
I'm sorry?
I guess it it empty out to the northwest.
Yes, and I've and uh Kevin's very, you know, that's Kevin's house right there behind it and and I've had numerous conversations with him about making sure we're protecting protecting him. I've got a an easement track uh from Jim to to get my water sewer and drainage out that way without having to uh hopefully improve the uh the drainage in there on on Kevin's place.
Yeah, when they built his place, that was a nightmare of handling that water through there.
That's what I've heard. I I I, you know, I wasn't aware of it personally, but I've heard numerous recollections that that was the case.
It still gets pretty darn spooky now. So, you know, obviously as a neighbor, I'm looking forward to seeing some really good plans, Larry, because good, we get nervous already.
Well, there's there's a, I met Kevin out there on the deal and there's a little wash that goes through the property line, kind of aimed at at his garage almost. And you know, that's one of the things we're going to have to do some work with there to to make sure the water doesn't get that far and we divert it before it even gets in there. And we're very aware of of that and look forward to resolving that issue with his benefit.
One of the things that I think one of the things that I think council um didn't include last time that we should really consider this time is um having staff have the ability to approve um minor changes that are have the substantially similar language to it. Um, you know, we're looking at pretty drawings, but when it comes down to nuts and bolts of, you know, what's ADA compliant? Which boards, you know, go here and there and that sort of thing? You know, I don't want to see these drawings every meeting for the next two years as we um approve. You know, each little thing, I think it makes sense from a practical perspective to give staff the authority to live within the guidelines of, you know, these are the buildings that council has approved. This is what they should look like. But we're not going to come out there with a measuring tape or a a calculator and count the number of cedar shingles on the front of the um Victorian and compare it to the drawing. If, as it turns out, that, you know, they come in four inch rather than five inch um pieces that his architect drew. Um, I think it's important to include that just from a workflow perspective on both a um commercial perspective for Mr. Jacob um a practical perspective for staff and, you know, a flow perspective for council.
Agreed.
Agreed.
But I love these buildings, Larry. They're so cute.
So cute.
The only request Larry is from my little boy Colton was to make sure that the Yeti family that lives just behind where that pond is. Make sure they get to stay there. That's all he asks.
Well, well, we're we're trying to work some sort of reciprocal deal out with the swimming pool that's right back there.
There we go. There's the gate. I love it. Not a bad idea.
So we uh, we really, uh, my wife and my daughter-in-law really studied hard on this Victorian deal and uh design and and it is by far the most expensive one and and uh we're not going to abuse and make it Cinderella City with all those Victorians, but we do think it'll make a neat attention getter along the street without uh uh having too many of them.
Is this still a four person house?
I'm sorry?
Is this, will this still accommodate four people?
Yes, uh huh. What the one of the, one of the changes we contemplated was one of the ones that had a loft in it was going to get a larger number of people. Uh, I think we're probably not going to proceed with that. You won't notice the difference when we when we finish the floor plan, but uh, yes, we won't be able to get at least four people in all of them. Uh, some will have two beds, some will have a bed and a hide a bed and that kind of thing, but uh my banker is anxious for me to to ask for some money, but I haven't yet because I'm still you know, we've we've tweaked this and tweaked it, my wife and and my daughter-in-law both. We've got some boards here and that's the disheartening thing about trying to do this with y'all over Zoom and it's a learning experience, but I've got these boards over here behind me that you remember the original renderings that we sent y'all? Well, these are tri-fold boards that have got all the different colors of fabrics from blinds, uh cabinets. It it and it's it's crazy the amount of time that they've they've spent in trying to make sure these things are going to be, you know, really popular and people are going to love them. And I think they will. They've done a good job.
And what's your timeline for rolling this out?
Uh, uh when uh pending tonight's action is I'll be at the bank. The bank is kind of sitting on hold to to put my final package together and get our construction stuff ready and then uh uh Mike Mathina, uh the engineer is is working toward uh final plans uh to get to Chris for his review for you know, the final drainage and the different things. And then the architect, uh, we've got final drawings for the for for the cottage. And then the architect, we've got final drawings for the, for the cottages and have bid them out. So we, we know what that cost is, the, the little bit of engineering that still needs to be done is, will be held up. And I don't think it'll be much one, Chris and Mike worked very well on trying to figure out how to, how to get our sewer deal done and we've worked out a good solution to it, I think, Chris. Chris went home.
I am at home, but I think we have worked out a good, a good solution.
Yeah, yeah.
Moved to approve the new cottage design and revised site plan as presented. On the second item, I'm just curious, is that something we need to have as an agenda item? Or Richard, will you just make sure that your staff from now on, you'll let them know that the council has given them additional discretion in making minor changes? Or is it something that we need to act on?
I think that's something we need to have affirmative action from the council on because it was part of the original approval.
Okay. So I, again, my motion is approve the new cottage design and revise site plan as presented.
And, and to, are you going to put an and on there, Tom?
Well, Richard has said he thought, what, should we just put it all in as one motion? Okay, and then additionally, as part of that motion, authorize staff to have discretion in approving minor design changes that are substantially similar to those already approved by council.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the new cottage design and revise site plan as presented. We also are considering allowing, authorizing the staff to have discretion in approving minor design changes that are substantially similar to those already approved by city council. This motion is debatable, amendable requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion.
And the second was made by?
Kevin.
Thank you.
All those in favor of approving the new cottage design and revised site plan as well as authorizing staff to have discretion in approving minor design changes that are substantially similar to those already approved by city council, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will approve the new cottage design and revised site plan and also authorize staff to have discretion in approving minor design changes that are substantially similar to those already approved by city council. Nothing on the executive session and the next item would then be council inquiry. Is there any council inquiry this evening? All right.
And I will. I have to update council on if you don't mind at this point. This past weekend, we had the city quarterly heavy trash pickup. We had three dumpsters out here that were completely full before the end of the day, Saturday, whereas normally there's allowed people to drop off both Saturday and Sunday. I think that was a combination of both the recent storm activity left a lot of outdoor debris as well as people having been home for a couple months and engaged in various household projects or cleanup. So looking at the possibility, if, I don't have any objections from council, of doing an additional heavy trash day in July about midway through until the next quarterly pickup. So we can, you know, catch up with the people who didn't get to put their stuff in because people were turned away. And so we prevent that from either overwhelming, you know, the waste management at household level and pushing them farther behind or run the risk of it ending up getting dumped out stores or left, left outside of homes. So I can go ahead and start to work to make that happen. I just want to make sure I don't have any objections from council.
My only comment would be that I heard that one household was responsible for filling an entire dumpster by themselves. And unfortunately, while, you know, I'm not always keen on adding additional rules, it seems that, you know, like the animal ordinance, you know, common sense is not prevailing and it's possible that we might require some limitations on business waste quantities of usage. I mean, there, we have three dumpsters this time, we often only have two. If somebody is going to use one half of the entire city's allocation for heavy trash, that seems an unfair use of resources.
I would agree on that and I think we can put some, you know, starting from a staff level, we can try to put some reasonable restrictions in place. If we need to come back to council for something firm that up, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Right. As I say, common sense and care for your neighbors, it seems like it should be enough, but perhaps not.
You're right, it should be, but yet somehow common sense isn't as common as we might imagine.
Right.
Just to confirm, Richard, we are checking licenses and utility bills to ensure that they're city resident.
Yeah, the staff is out there, there's a sign posted, they're checking to make sure. As the sign says, I believe it says either driver's licenses or a current city utility bill. That way they can have someone who might say be a fairly new resident, but not yet have their driver's license changed over.
I know we had posted on social media and I saw quite a few people that were tagged outside of the city. And I just wanted to ensure that we're using this, that our taxpayers are actually getting to take advantage and not those outside.
I will make sure that, you know, for the future times that we have that discussion that, to ensure that staff is in fact checking those items, not just that it's a sign that's posted out there.
Right, I know they do, they're, they're really good about that. And the driver's license is important because I don't think the apartment people pay traditional utility bills. I think that they pay utility, our utility bills, I think they pay it as part of their, they pay to the apartment building. So we have, we have to stick to the driver's license, but yeah, overall, it was, it was one of my, somebody on Worsham Street used an entire dumpster. It wasn't me.
Regulator.
Discuss that with staff and we'll make a point to keep reasonable restrictions in place and try to help enforce common sense on, on the common public, I suppose. And if there's no other comments on that, I do have one other item. And that is just a reminder that the cybersecurity training is due this week. Susan just earlier this evening sent out an email up there. If any, for any of those who haven't done it yet, please get that done coming up to meet the requirements. If you have any questions or have any problems with that, either let Susan or I know. The training itself is fairly short and is not that difficult. So, you know, we'll be happy to help you through it if it's, if there's some equipment issue.
Was there a test at the end?
Yeah.
In fact, a test. But honestly, if you have paid attention to it, you should not have a problem with it.
Okay.
But, but Susan put copious note, so if you want to be the best, you have a lot of, you have a high hurdle.
Take her to lunch, okay.
Yeah, I have a good authority that you, that at least one or two people did not score 100% so you still have room to outscore someone, someone else out there.
Challenge accepted, okay. All right, with that, is there anything else, Richard?
That is all I have, thank you very much.
All right. Does anyone else have anything for council inquiry?
Move that we adjourn.
Okay.
It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will adjourn the meeting at exactly 7:39 this evening. Thank you so much, y'all have a great rest of your week.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Kevin, it looks like you're in a fun place.